I'm waiting for Jack. Okay, yeah, so I got the nod from Jackie. Don't think I'm gonna look at anybody but her. All right, so just so that you are aware, Councilman Smith has had to step offline. We do still have Councilman Henderson, is that correct?
Yeah, we'll see how long that lasts.
Okay, all right, fantastic. So we will move right back into where we were, which was 2.4 EDC Utah site visit update. Heather Upshaw.
And please forgive us if we might be, you know, putting some food in our mouths.
Oh, I thought you said nod off, like if we start nodding off.
We haven't eaten today.
Okay, so I just wanted to come tonight and update you on the EDC Utah tour that we had last month. Councilmember Orin was there with us and several staff members. Here is our tour map, so we visited six locations. And as you can see here, we started with the Town Center and ended at the Harriman Innovation District. You all know these sites, so unless you have specific questions, I'm not going to get into any details on the sites themselves. I just wanted to let you know the feedback EDC Utah gave to us. Go ahead, Steve.
Just a question, was there any discussion or presentation of the auto mall property?
We talked about the auto mall in generalities on our tour, but we did not.
They didn't go and see the location or anything?
No. So after visiting each site, the feedback that we received from them is, one thing they think we should have put together is for each site, water capacity at those sites. And mainly, we would need this in our manufacturing areas, that's where the water consumption would come from. So I will be working with Justin and his department to get that information, so we have that on hand for future RFIs that come through from EDC Utah. Another thing that they suggested is down along Redwood Road, doing a drone flyover and then work with engineering on actually showing, there are so many utilities that run through that property that if you just look at it on a map, it looks like an amazing site. There are like 200, over 200 acres of manufacturing, and then we got down there and they're like, oh, yeah, this is a little difficult. So having that readily available for future potential users, so I'm working with engineering to prepare that as well. And then the last site, the Innovation District, they, I'm sure Sherry remembers the comment, they said, wow, you saved us the best site for last. They just looked out to the west and saw the property and said, you know, we would love to show this site. And we said, so would we, you know, this isn't within our boundaries. But we do talk to the property owner, and if we get RFIs, we, you know, refer those to Kennecott. So those were the sites, and those were some of the specific feedback that they gave to staff. And then they also provided us with the community assessment. Steve, you had requested that at one point in a Community Development Committee meeting, so I have packets for you. You guys can look through that and get back to me if you have any specific questions on that.
Awesome.
That's all I have for you.
Heather, will you just tell me, because in my mind, those were kind of like homework assignments, you know? Tell me a timeframe, when are we gonna have that information back to them?
Back to EDC.
Yeah, and I know that, I think that there is a meeting maybe. I think you and Clint are gonna attend with Kennecott.
Yeah, on Friday.
On Friday, and so I'd assume that maybe it would be really good to be able to have a little bit of that dialogue, even pictures or things like that, that would show, you know, potentials and, anyway. What's the timeline on getting that stuff back to them?
I believe the water capacity question is forthcoming. Justin's shaking his head, so I won't speak with like a day or two, but I think it will be fairly quickly.
Okay.
And Blake, he's been working to, we also have a new aerial. I don't know if we've received it yet, but a new aerial that we can use to overlay those utility lines as well on the Redwood Road site. So I don't, I think that one might take a little bit longer, especially if we have to do some drone flights, but I don't, I don't think it should take longer than like a couple weeks? The drone and lane and the utilities?
Because I think they really wanted to know, how big of a pad could you have, right? Is there a continuous 20 acre, 800, you know?
Yeah, once you remove those constraints, like all the utility constraints, what are we looking at? Yeah.
So you think a couple weeks on that? Okay, cool. Yeah, I just think the sooner the better, just because things continue to be hopping. You know, people are looking, they're not making any more land, I say that too often, but if we really want to get any of their assistance and stuff, we're gonna have to come with that data.
And one thing they also said, you know, they show site selectors, the same three or four sites every time they're coming through Utah, and they said, if we could throw your sites on here, that would make a big difference, so.
Yeah, awesome.
I think I mentioned this a couple meetings ago in a report that we had had, a presentation from GOED in our municipal councils meeting. Have we reached out to them about possibly coming down for a conversation and doing a kind of a, maybe not necessarily a tour the same as EDC Utah, but at least coming down and having a conversation with us about, are there blanks we can fill in for them with homework assignments that make us more attractive in their minds as well?
You know, I haven't worked with their new Dan. His name's Dan, I can't think of his last name.
I have it, sorry, but yes.
I have not worked with him directly. I've worked with a few staff members that are still there after the new governor was elected, but yeah, we can definitely reach out to him and plan a time for him to come and visit, and maybe he would like to do a tour as well.
Yeah, he was really an impressive guy, and the conversation I had with him was really great. I just think he would have a lot of useful information for us. And I think, just like we got from the EDC Utah tour, we realized there's some information that would help them market us. Let's see if there's something maybe we could do for GOED as well, or at least give them the same information, maybe that would be helpful too, so.
Definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to item 2.5, Public Works and Public Safety Facility Discussion.
Oh, sweet, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it. That's awesome.
All right, Mayor and Council, so much to your benefit, this will kind of be a team approach, so we'll have some others, not just myself speaking tonight, but if you recall, it was probably about four or six weeks ago, we presented to you the kind of the findings of our programming schematic design for both of these buildings. And we wanted to come back and be able to speak in a little more detail, talk a little bit about the need that we have. We have some pictures in here of our existing, you know, facility, and then also be able to address some of your comments or questions you may have had over the last several weeks, as you may have thought about it. And then we'll talk a little bit about funding. So moving forward here, I'll probably turn some time over to Chief Carr to kind of give a little explanation. Since this is their building, I wanted to allow him some time to be able to speak to this and give you some of their thoughts on direction on how they want to move forward, so.
I thought we were gonna get out of here by midnight.
Can we make a proposal next time that we let Chief Whitson go first? And however long he takes, that's how long the police department can get to.
So Chief, if you wouldn't mind just maybe giving some thoughts on this, so.
Thank you. So as we went through a lot of the programming with this building over here, it's a large building. We spent a lot of time trying to design it to the property, and we had some difficulties with that. At the end of the day, I cannot advise you that this is a good idea. Sorry? I cannot advise you that this is a good idea, the public safety building. I just don't think it's right for the city, I don't think it's the right time, and I don't even know if it's the right location. What I do know is that we need Public Works. I do know that we need to focus on Public Works for the health of this city, for our fleet, for all the things we need to do. And to that end, I believe that the police department would fit well over there. I think it would save us money, it would create a better system for our response times to that side. And to be honest with you, at some point, we're gonna need to look for some buildings towards the southeast and might possibly to the west, that we need to look at. So as beautiful as it is, and as nice and big as it is, and as close to City Hall as it is, it's just not a good idea at this time.
So if I understand, your recommendation would be to not move forward with the public safety building?
I would not move forward with it, I'd put it on a shelf.
Think you think that the facility that was outlined in the Public Works proposal would be sufficient for your needs?
Absolutely, and we do believe, Cody and I have looked at it in depth, we believe the facility at Public Works would fit the police department with the growth projections we have, with the trajectory we have. We think it will fit us for 15 years.
And then for additional resources, you would suggest perhaps building substations or occupying?
Right, so what we know, we are a very large city, we're a strangely shaped city, and if we start talking about response times, we are going to need stations away from here.
Understand.
So we project in 10 to 12 years that the city will probably be split for patrol purposes at about 138. We'll have a south and a north unit, we'll have sergeants on duty in both of those areas, and probably a watch commander. That looks like how it will build out. Those are, when we look at other cities that will be similar to our size in that timeframe, that's what they look like. We know that some of the cities built huge police departments in strange areas that I look at that now and think, and they think we shouldn't have done that. When we look at South Jordan, they did some pretty unique things. They've got the new building out on Mountain View Corridor that houses a large portion of their police department, right? Or will, yeah, and fire. So to be as candid as possible, I don't think that's a good idea. I think that it would not be fiscally responsible for us to do that.
Chief, would then the police force vacate their space here?
We would, and I've talked to Wendy quite a bit about this, and to Tammy because of the, you know, the public piece that comes here to interact. I would think that we would leave records here. We would have an area for probably some administration, because we do, I feel a little uncomfortable leaving the building unprotected in the sense that having sworn members here is a good thing, in case something happens, right? So we would probably have an administrative component here, but more importantly, the records department would probably still stay here, because that's the interaction piece. That's where they're coming to give money, to get their reports and those kind of things, I think that needs to stay here. But again, as I've looked at this over and over again, to my own department's detriment maybe, I don't think it's a wise move. All of the other places that I've seen, all of the other law enforcement agencies that are in growing cities like us, they've done it different, and I think it's smarter.
Well, you said something I just want to question before I'm done commenting here. You said perhaps to the detriment of our team, is there any degradation of service or capacity for growth or organizational concerns or logistical concerns that would come up by not having this building as opposed to moving over there?
I'll be frank, I have not been a fan of trying to fit that building on this piece of property. I think we went about it the wrong way. I think we had a piece of property that we tried to fit a building to, and it is not gonna meet our needs. When we look at public safety, the reprogramming we can do there will meet our needs, and it makes sense. We can go in there and make things work, we can have detectives where they need to be. This building over here was a strangely shaped building, and we would have things, we would, quite frankly, I think in 15 years, whoever replaces me would regret that I did that.
Okay, thank you.
But I do think the Public Works area will be sufficient for us for 15 years. All of the growth models that Cody and I run, we think we can survive there very well. And another big key piece of this is evidence. We don't have a good answer for evidence in this building over here. We have a great answer for evidence in Public Works. And it's kind of a coordinated use, right? People come to get their evidence, sometimes big items and cars and those kind of things. It makes sense there, it doesn't make sense here. So I really believe the good answer is to add public safety to Public Works. We have to have Public Works. My department will not survive without a Public Works facility. The one we have right now is dysfunctional.
So that does bring up another question. The proposal that we saw last week for the Public Works building showed a large unfinished portion in the upstairs.
Right.
Would that need to be finished?
I believe so.
In order to accommodate you now?
The two things, well, not necessarily the upstairs, what we want to do is finish the basement. This is one of those opportunities that we want to do the basement. It's on the scale of what we should do, that's a pretty cheap growth piece for us. And again, evidence fits over here, the way they have designed it, it fits, it makes sense. And it isn't this much money, right? We can fit over there and save money doing it. I just can't in good faith tell you that in 15 years, that'll be a good idea. This will not be. And the reason I say to my own detriment is, we're out of space. You've been down there, we have things shoved in ceiling tiles. We need to go somewhere as we grow, and we are gonna grow, we're growing. But that's, I just don't think that's a great idea, it just doesn't fit. And I'm sure you've thought about the layout of that and determined that it's probably not the best police building. I've never seen a police building built like that.
Me either.
It was, I mean, they did their work, right, to make it fit on that property, but I just don't think it's a good idea. Yeah, yeah, it is, it's a beautiful building, and it would match well, and it looks nice, and they have beautiful finishes. We don't need that. We don't need that. I think at Public Works, we fit in well in that area, I really do. And for me, being stuck on this side of a city with the majority of my police department on the boundaries of Riverton does not make sense. We're nearly 70 blocks long the other way. I need to really think about getting us in a place for the next 15 years that's gonna fit us, and then additionally, think about property we can buy in places where we can have future substations. That's what we should be doing.
When you're talking about things you could buy, I remember, I don't know, if it was the sheriff or the UPD, used to be like in the little strip mall right here, right?
Yeah, that was the, it was both, it was the sheriff's and then later UPD.
So does something like that work? Like if you have something on the southeast and they have, and they have a spot to lease, does that kind of thing work for substations, or do you need your own property and own building?
You're better off to have your own property, and we've done that, I've seen it done in Magna. I think what Wendy touched on, as we watched South Jordan grow, both times that they've built a fire station, they've included law enforcement in that piece, and it's a good idea, right? You're maximizing your building, you're really saving money, and I don't know, they had officers at the 40th West Station, I don't know how many they have out of the new one, but it is built for law enforcement and fire to cohabitate, and it's a good idea. And it's something we should really consider.
A new big one over there in South Jordan?
Yeah, yeah, they really, really did their homework on that.
That's a huge facility, yeah.
And it's what we, it's really what we should be doing. You know, there are 20,000 residents ahead of us, we should watch what they do. We should learn from how they grow, we should watch what they build and when they build it. It's a competent staff.
There's a hard wall between you guys though, right?
I don't know, I'm comfortable, I'm comfortable sharing, I don't know how Woody feels about that, but I think that's the direction we go. The diversification of our response model is a much more appropriate thing for the city. But again, I will say, the success of this city, the success of the departments is going to matter with Public Works. It just does. We cannot afford to drop that ball. And I am very willing to not do that and put all of our eggs in that basket, because I think it is the right thing to do. Questions?
What's a $20 million?
The mayor has me in his sight.
No, I don't.
Okay.
Chief, you have given us nothing but unbiased and, well, probably biased, but your honest interpretation of what you think needs to happen, and it has served this community extremely well. I will, when I hear you recommend in very strong terms that we should not do this, we should focus on something else, that carries an extreme amount of weight. I think that this body, when we requested for them to start the architectural work for the building right next door, was because that's where we were told we were planning on putting it. If there is a better place to put it, and it is the recommendation from our staff that we should put it somewhere else, or we should cohabitate, or we should do something different, because that is what's right for our citizens, I'm absolutely gonna take that with extreme importance and look at that and say, all right, well, where do we put it and how do we make it work?
And I'll take it one step further. I believe so strongly that Public Works has to happen, that that is another driving factor behind this not happening. We have to focus on that, and if we are going to bond for it, it should be there. It should include the coordination of many departments at that facility, and it will work.
It concerns me that you declared a functioning Public Works facility essential to your, supporting your operations, right? You said you wouldn't be able to operate effectively without that, that's a concerning statement.
It should concern us all, because in order for us to get cars in and out, trucks in and out, I have to have someplace to do that. We are living on top of ourselves. My fleet stays here because there is no place out there to put them when they're getting fixed. We have to transport them out one at a time to get them fixed. It's about as inefficient as it can come. There are days, in order for me to get our tactical response vehicle out, I have to move cars. If I get it out at 2:00 in the morning, I spend 20 minutes moving cars. There's, we cannot continue to do that. In my opinion, public safety could be at risk.
That, to me, speaks volumes. And I appreciate that open and honest communication with us, because that helps us make informed and educated decisions that are, a pretty building's a pretty building, and we, great, it'd look great next door, and we would spend lots of money, and we would use it the way we could, but if there's a better way to do it, we should absolutely be looking at that.
Not interested in pretty buildings, not interested in spending a lot of money. I'm interested in making things work, making them safe. I've got to fit evidence in somewhere, I can't continue to have evidence in a closet. Councilman Shields, you've seen our evidence room, you've been in our evidence room, I can't continue to do that. We're a growing city.
That's atrocious.
Yeah, it's well-run.
Whoever's the smallest member of the force has to be responsible.
That would be Lance. But there are times that we have to keep, for instance, anything that has to do with a death, we have to keep that forever. I've gotta have places to put stuff. And this Public Works for evidence has been very uniquely developed for that. And my hat's off to GSBS and Justin and Cody, they did a great job with it. But we do have some reprogramming that has already been done and that we can do to make that work.
So Chief, I've had the opportunity to go through the department several times, but it's been a while, because COVID and everything else. I think it would probably be wise for all of us, if we haven't done it in the last few months, to set up a point with you, to have you walk us through the department again, to walk us through the, what you need as far as public services, our Public Works, and how we can make that work better. Because I think that if our most trusted, you know, law enforcement team is telling us that we need to do something different, let's do a field trip and figure it out.
Field trip.
I recommend you do Public Works also.
Yes, as part of all of it, Public Works, the precincts.
And Station 103.
Well, that's the other thing, I was literally gonna say, can we also go to, let's just make a day of it? And get that, so we'll schedule that later, I'll schedule that with you later. But let's get that on the schedules for us so that we can really have that conversation. Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it. Cody, do you want to say something?
Sorry, just real quick, Justin and I were having a side conversation. I think it's important to note in the context of that discussion, as we talk about being out of space, this facility, when it was programmed, designed, and built, was never intended to house a full police department. It was designed and programmed to be a substation of our previous law enforcement provider. So everything from forensics processing to evidence storage to facilities to store vehicles and specialty equipment, all of that stuff happened somewhere else within the county, and so we didn't have to worry about that here. Now that we're going in a different direction, we have to take some of those things into account. So I want to make it very clear that as we've talked about how this came out to light, this is not an issue of mismanagement of resources, this is not an issue of we, as a staff, have made decisions that have put us in a bad situation. The fact of the matter is that this facility, as it was programmed and built, was not built for an entire operational functioning police department. And those are the types of challenges that we've had, and to the detriment probably of every department director, because we've stolen storage space and pilfered resources and things from every department in the city to try and house evidence in 14 different places and have a place to park our vehicles, and unfortunately, we just don't have the space. And the other departments have been very, very gracious to us to allow us and accommodate some of those needs, but that's why it just wasn't programmed for that.
And frankly, all of this testimony that we're giving about the evidence room doesn't necessarily bode well for those detectives who are, you know, trying to make a case against somebody. All that disparate locations and accommodation for all the evidence is a concern.
And it's very well-tracked, and it's very accounted for, and we have procedures and protocols in place to make sure that it's kept track of, right? We just have to, instead of having an evidence facility, we have it in six different secured rooms, so.
Do we currently have other things in the city that can be utilized? We have an old city hall that we still own and a parking lot there. Do we have certain things?
I'm getting the feeling they've already talked about that.
Get us out of a bind. I understand the desire for certain things, but the fact of the matter is, we had a lot of budget pre-meetings before, and we don't have any money to accomplish this. That's a major bond, we just bonded for the water. It's a bunch more major debt, with, at least the water is revenue generating, this is not. So we have to not only want it and understood that, and the youth council just barely took a tour of Public Works. I understand that they're crunched, understand the realities of some of those things, but do we have certain things that will bridge the gap for a while until we can actually really afford it?
And I'm standing up here, but that's absolutely not my area of expertise, so.
Yeah, I've noticed that Justin's been standing behind the officers.
That's really a question for Alan, but yes, those discussions certainly are ongoing.
Yeah, so as far as the ability to bond for that, we'll get into that a little bit later, and then obviously Alan can speak to whatever questions you have there, but in looking at this and knowing, and looking at the dollar signs, right? We understood that, and we've done quite a bit of research on alternatives already. And we have that information that we can present at another meeting. Old City Hall is one that we've looked at, and we've done a lot of research into, again, Monty and CJ and those guys in facilities have done a lot of work. They put together a preliminary estimate to retrofit the old city hall to make it work for their needs. It was probably three months ago that we all met over there, walked through it, put together some plans, and the estimates are just over $3 million to retrofit that building. And that doesn't account for some of the needs that Public Works still has, right? We still have needs also. And the needs of Public Works to do some retrofit and alternatives out there to try and help with animal services, because they're out of space as well, are much more than the $3 million to retrofit City Hall, Old City Hall. So that is information that we do have, and we can provide at a later date. But we wanted to have this discussion and kind of wrap up this, and then be able to address some of those questions, but and so we'll move, sorry, any more questions before?
No, I just, I just need to feedback, right? I don't think any of us would disagree. Go take a tour, everyone understands bulging at the seams, for sure. But then the question is, if you live in a home that you're bulging at the seam, can you afford to just sell it and move up, or can you pay the mortgage, right? And that's our job, is to have to figure out, can we pay the mortgage on that? And Alan did some presentations with us two-on-two that basically said, no. It's not, you better figure out what your priorities are, because we can't afford this kind of stuff. We have some obligations on the auto mall property that really bind us as far as capital projects and things like that. We have to be able to pay for it. And so those were beautiful buildings that were presented the other day, but it's like, do we need the Taj Mahal Public Works yard? Or can we have functional structures that will help facilitate that for much lower, much lower costs? And I don't, I'm not recommending that we just lowball everything and put up shoddy craftsmanship and things like that. It needs to last, but we have to have some really realistic discussions on this as far as being able to afford it.
No, and we've already had those discussions with Layton Construction and how we can minimize costs by using other types of finishes. So those discussions have already happened. And so if we are, if we are able to move forward with the project, all of those things will be taken into consideration, so.
And sure to your point, though, those are all valid concerns. I mean, we've got, we've got debt service on this property over here, we're servicing the bond here. We've got, you know, $11 million liability over there, right? We've got, I mean, there's a lot of, we have other bonds that we're servicing already, so this can't be discussed in a vacuum, right? It has to be discussed in the framework of all of these other issues being concerned, being considered as part of it, right? There, there's only so much money, right? There's limitations on all of that stuff, so we gotta figure, we gotta be smarter and figure out how to do some of this stuff, so.
Right. So what I'm hearing from the council, and if somebody disagrees with me, please speak up. What I'm hearing is that we're giving the direction to the staff to put a nice big red hold on the public safety building and focus more on a reasonable and focus more on a reasonable Public Works facility.
A Public Works and a Public Safety solution, right? I, I guess what we're, I'm asking you all, and I'm sure you've all have been doing this because you do this, is really go outside the box on this because have some more discussions with Alan. He'll help understand our, our bond obligations, which I'm sure you're all very familiar with. But let's start looking at solutions. We, we're working on, I think the GSI department is working on, what properties does Harriman City currently own that we are not paying mortgages on? What do we currently own? Maybe we can get rid of an obligation of a debt by selling off a piece of property and putting on pieces of properties that we currently own or things like that. Let's just do, just really try more focused on, come up with some solutions kind of outside of the box because I personally would have a very difficult time bonding for this because we have to pay it back. And I don't want to have to, I mean, property taxes, yeah, I don't even know how much you could possibly increase them to make a difference on this kind of stuff. You can't.
Right.
And I just, I hate to burden forever, you know, paying off this kind of debt.
Yeah, no, correct. And so that's why it's something that has to be considered as a priority. Where does it fall in line with those priorities, right?
Yeah.
And so we can provide some of that information so you understand what those costs and what the debt service could possibly be. And then we can work on deciding what type of priority, where this falls in the priority list. So we'll, we'll move through some of these slides a little more quickly. Obviously, we have the Public Works facility. And then here's just some, a little bit of history on what it looked like. So obviously in 2003, we, it was recently after the property was acquired from the Butterfield family and started building some of the intended uses for that Public Works property, well, what we call Public Works property at Butterfield Park. And that was for recreation and, and, you know, rodeo grounds and, and basically a recreation area for the people of Harriman. And moving forward to 2005, you can see there was some immense changes there. Obviously, our Public Works yard, which are the two buildings there to the right. And moving on to the next slide, if it will go. We'll go back one. Not listening to me, Jonathan. Yeah.
You're right, Chief. How are we supposed to get that response vehicle out of there when you've got that in front of it?
Yeah, so as you can see.
You've got a red stripe in front of that. You've got to paint that.
Well, the hard part is where do we put the trucks that are in front of it? So anyway, you can see here what it looks like now.
Holy cow.
You know, and I have to commend our managers out there. They are doing as good a job as they can managing the space they have. As you can see, it does look cluttered, but at the end of the day, it's actually fairly, you know, put together and kept up quite well. And you can see the impound lot there for HPD to the far, you know, part of the screen there. And then that's our employee parking that we have just on the top of the hill there. But as you can see, they're, you know, they're utilizing the space the best we can. And a lot of this equipment that you're seeing now, would we, would we like to have it inside, right? We'd like to have it in a building. It doesn't have to be heated. It doesn't have to have all sides, but it'd be nice to get it out of the weather. Because a lot of those vehicles that we have there, and Monte can attest to this, are, you know, going on 10 or 12 years old, right? And so we want to be able to keep some of those, that larger equipment to get the benefit of use out of it. And if it's out in the elements, it's, you know, we're going to get less life, so.
Justin, I have a question too. Just kind of follow up what Chief was saying as far as different, you know, the city's spread out and he wants response times and so maybe substations different places. What about Public Works? Does it make sense to have two locations and keep this location, have a different location somewhere else? Does it make more sense, rather than having one big spot in the middle of the city, does it make more sense to have some people down here, some people up there?
Yeah, so we, in the, in the programming of the Public Works facility, the intent was still to have some function out of this facility as well, storage and those types of things. If you look at, if you look at what we're building over here, it's not going to handle our total need, right? We're going to still need to be able to function out of this, right? It is smart, similar to how Chief alluded to, to have your facilities spread out a little bit. We'll still plan to have some equipment here. We'll have material stockpiles so that if there's work happening on this part of town, we don't have to travel all the way back just to get more sand or gravel or salt or those types of things. So we still, the intent would still be to have this facility. It's just we've outgrown it. And, and South Jordan, I'm sure you're aware of their facility on Redwood Road there. They are intending in the next couple of years to build an exact, well, another replica of that site that's almost the same size. So they're intending to do something again. And I just spoke to their Public Works Director about a month ago about that and, and they're getting ready to go out for an RFP to design. So, well, I don't want to speak for him, but that's what he said.
And they'll put it in a whole different area of the city.
Yeah, it's going to be, it sounds like it'll be on the west part of, you know, up in the Daybreak area, I would assume. So, so we, we would intend to, essentially, we're doing the same thing. Like we're taking, we have a Public Works yard, but we need more space. And so we're going to intend to. And so the programming for there is still accounting for some of the storage here. Obviously, we have a large park we still have to maintain, so there will still be a large park presence here. So we will have two facilities essentially.
Okay.
So just, just a little closer, you know, look into kind of what we're dealing with. And, and see, as you can see here, the bottom left corner of the screen, one of those bays is where HPD stores a lot of their material and their large equipment. And so as you can see, this is just the type of congestion we have to try and keep our equipment and vehicles within a lock-secured area. This is the type of, you know, this is what we're left with is needing to do. So we also have our fleet department. If you look in the top-left picture, that far building, those two bays to the left is our fleet. Now, they work well for smaller vehicles, but the majority of the repairs for our fleet department on larger equipment is done outside. In all types of weather, they don't have their tools. They have to bring everything out to there, right? It's just not efficient and it's not the best working conditions, right? Because when a piece of equipment needs to get fixed, it can't just wait through a snowstorm or can't wait through a rainstorm or, you know, 100 degrees outside. So it's just inefficient and it's not a good place or work environment for the employees there. And, and similar to everything else, they're doing a wonderful job with managing the space they have.
Yep, very creative cubbies, shelves. Yep, they're doing.
And so here's just a few more pictures of the area there. And I'm sure you've been out to the area and can, and have seen some of this. So the next slides, we'll start getting into some of kind of the breakdown of costs. So what we did is we went through and determined space and percent of that building or facility per department, okay? And the reason we did this is we'll get into a little bit more is to try and determine the cost because we have multiple funds through the city that aren't just general fund, right? We have enterprise funds, we have taxing districts. And so we went through this exercise to try and determine potentially how to break down a debt service payment between all, between these different departments and funds so that it just doesn't feel like the general fund is obligated to pay this whole debt. And so this is kind of a breakdown in costs. If we were to stick with the phase one total cost of, you know, around the 23 million. Now, I want to make a caveat, this 23 million is just for the building. It doesn't include the, the remainder of the property, okay, which is around $3 million if I'm correct, Alan. The other thing that this doesn't include is the furnishings of the admin areas, right? And that's about going to, Monte did some projections and thinks that'd be about a half a million dollars. And that might be something that we try and just pay for cash rather than put it in a bond. We can work through some of those things. But as you can see, the general fund departments and the enterprises, funds and the taxing districts kind of helped split up the total cost for the building.
But what does it do to our water bills then? Because is there enough, enough margin left in the water bills because we just barely did a bond for the water?
We did. And if you remember, we had, if you remember, our debt service coverage ratio was quite, was quite good, right? And, and we went through the exercise to say, okay, well, how much more could we potentially bond for? And we had quite a bit of leeway there. And with going with the $20 million bond, instead of going for something more, obviously that leaves us some more leeway. Now, I, I don't, I don't think that we would need to increase fees in the short term to try and cover this. And Alan could speak to that a little bit better, but with our debt cover, our debt service coverage ratios, I think we could probably be comfortable because the council, if you remember, in 2019, adopted a water rate that has a fairly mild increase, 2% every year for the, until 2023, I think, is when that one expires. And we'll go through the process again.
Sorry, I keep interrupting you. I'll let you.
How much of that for HPD could be covered by safety impact fees?
So the, my understanding of the impact fees with public safety is the intent of that is to build facilities. And so I think 100% of impact fees could go to cover this debt service.
I'm looking for a nod from Alan. Okay. I, I know better. I know, I know the way to find out from Alan.
From Alan, that's almost saying hooray. I mean, that's, that's very.
And so, and so the one thing we're trying to illustrate here is, and I know that, that you're well aware of this because we spoke about it, you know, during the water bond discussion. But, you know, if we're looking at, you know, inflated costs, right, is, if we push this off further, this is what this could potentially look like as far as costs. So if you anticipate a 4% inflated cost projection over the next several years, this is kind of what that would look like now. I think we probably all understand right now, construction costs are going up much higher than 4%, right? You're seeing construction materials that are, in some cases, 40, 50% of what they were just recently. So obviously, we'll need to take that into consideration. And all of these costs are probably already, you know, not even correct because they were done several months ago and costs, you know, have changed. But, and with some of the changes that the Chief and Deputy Chief alluded to as far as potentially making some adjustments over there to be able to meet their 15-year needs, we'd have to go back and work through some of that stuff. But this just kind of gives you an idea of what that might look like. Now, this, we've done the same thing on, if you remember, we had a broke-up phase one, phase two. And this is, some of the departments had more phase two improvements than others. We have a lot more site improvements because we have to build the S road and a lot of the stuff that's to the north. And you can see the kind of the cost breakdown. So you have stormwater, for instance, and streets has a much larger percentage because they have those larger buildings that were to the north side of the property, if you remember. And this kind of gives that same breakdown for that, for those phase two.
If we, let's say we started, had everything done by the end of the year, we started next year. When would we see phase two? How many years following?
So that kind of depends on our growth, but I could easily see that between, if we built phase one with our current facility, you know, I think we could easily be 10 years and, before phase two.
Okay.
And, and we can make some efficiencies here and at our other site to try and make that and stretch that out as far as we possibly could. So if you see at the bottom of the screen there, that kind of breaks down the percentage of the total project there. So our recommendation would be is, you know, at least try and move forward with phase one. Obviously, we need to try and see where that fits in priorities. We'll, our, our plan is to, you know, once we get some direction here, if it looks like it's, you know, something that we want to move forward with and continue to get more information back to you, we can work with GSBS to modify some of the design and try and get some updated costs based on some of the discussions that we've had here tonight and get that back to you. We can also bring back some of those alternatives that we discussed.
Do you guys have any questions?
Oh, sorry, I'm grumpy about it, but I just, I'm just, I just like, just.
To be fair, it's 11 o'clock at night.
Just, yeah, well, it's just that it's just very, just concerning to me to have just pile in some more debt when we already are.
Yeah, and I, and I think I had this in the.
We're having our time paying back.
I think I had this in the staff report, but not in the presentation. Just to kind of give you an idea on what a debt service payment would be. So for the phase one improvements, which is, which would include the property, it would be about $27 million bond, would be about $1.8 million annually for a 20-year. Now, Alan gave us some numbers on what a 25 or a 30-year might look like. And a 25 would be about 1.5 and a 30-year would be 1.3. If we break that down based on these percentages, the general fund of that 1.8, if we did the 20-year, would be about $960,000. And then the other funds would cover the remainder of that. So we've tried to get creative in ways to try and help spread the cost and not put the, the burden on the general fund and utilize some of these other funds to help cover that. And we'll, we'll continue to gather that information and bring it back to you. But we just wanted to get some direction on how we can move forward and, and address some concerns and comments that you might have, so.
So I'm going to guess, well, I'm not going to guess, I'm going to, please tell me if I'm incorrect in the direction of the council, is that we are going to ask that you put focus on phase one, bringing back a reasonable possibility of how we can fund it and how we can fit the public safety needs that are needed in that, in that, better in as a project from the get-go. We kind of said we were going to do this and then, and then we have more over here. Let's get that flushed out a little bit more so it's a little bit more specific. And then bring it back to us so that we can see what we're actually looking at as far as an actual financial obligation, what our options are, what the true debt service would be, we'd be looking at. I'm sure Alan has all these numbers ready to go for us so that we can really look at that and start making an informed decision on how quickly, if, if at all, we want to take action on this particular item.
I, I think there's another part of this too is suggesting that you can assign these costs out to the various departments. Maybe that makes sense under current budgets, but based on projected budgets of these various departments and their ongoing needs and, and future considerations, I want to make sure that, that if, if that's a reasonable way to proceed on paying the debt services, having these different funds do that, how does that impact the operation of those funds and their needs on the, right? I mean, there's funds that should be available for each one of those separate needs and paying for their growth and their future needs as well. So I don't want to, I, I'd like to understand if this is any kind of impedance to, to ongoing operations of all these other funds. We're going to, we would talk about burdening with the debt service as well.
Yeah, like police, 35% of this would come out of the police department? And, and so does that mean we don't hire some officers here and there?
I assume that that would come from impact fees.
Regard, and, and anyway, and in addition to what the mayor said, I, I personally would, would really like to see, again, some outside of the box. What do we have in our inventory? What could we do to, to maybe stretch this out a little bit further so that we can maybe pay back the debt we owe to your department before, before we encumber you with more debt that you are responsible for?
Justin, I completely agree with Councilman, Councilwoman Orne in regards to thinking outside the box. I am aware that staff has been doing that for a very, very long time. And I would look for your, once again, you guys are the experts, we are not. So if you think you've exhausted those, please let us know. If there is something else we can do, yes, please. Let's see if we can do some, you know, something else to make this work as long as we can. But if you feel that you have exhausted that, we would also like to know that's, I, I don't, I, I want to make sure staff feels empowered to tell us what they really think, not what they think they want us, what they think we want to hear. Does that make sense?
Yep.
And so please tell us what your actual recommendation is. Whether that be we can make something work, great. Like let's make something, if, if you really think we've exhausted it, please let us know that as well so that we can make an informed decision.
Yeah. I mean, I can speak to a little of that now, but as far as exhausting the use of space out there, I think we have done that. Without, without spending additional capital money to expand, right?
I don't, could you expand on, you know, where you could expand that?
We have ideas. We've already thought through that. It's not the best plan. Plus, then you're building all of your facilities in one site rather than like we've talked about. I, I will say that I think HPD probably has the greatest need. And I will say animal services as well. We brought both of those departments on without adding any new facilities. And we've welcomed them in and then made room for them. But I, I think the greatest need is HPD. And that facility answers their biggest concern, which is the evidence, right, and how they can grow. You know, you've seen what they're dealing with. You know, you've seen what they're dealing with as far as events goes and.
I, I will say I'm extremely concerned that we, and I, I think this is an immediate issue. We need to see if we can figure out how to address that we don't have immediate access to our emergency response vehicle twenty four seven. I know that that's an additional burden to try to place on you to, to, to make it work so that we have access to that vehicle. But if, once again, it's a public safety issue, we've talked about that many times today. And I would like to see if there's anything we can do to make sure that those officers have access to that resource whenever they might need it, even if it's two o'clock in the morning. I know that everyone is working hand in hand to make it work as great as, as possible. I know it's awful and I will be going out there to look at myself, but, but that is, you know, if we have an active shooter situation, we can't spend twenty minutes waiting for a vehicle to get pulled out of, uh, out of the garage.
Okay.
Does that give you the direction you need to?
Yep.
Go back?
Yeah, I think, I think we can bring some of that.
Hey, Justin, it's, it's like twenty five, thirty million dollars, we're supposed to beat you up over it.
Yeah. I know. Yeah, so great. So thank you, we appreciate this. This gives us some good direction and we'll bring it back as soon as we have it put together.
And will either you or the city manager reach out to see if any of the other council members would like to tour facilities or, or look to see what they have, just so that we have an opportunity to reach out that's not ten fifty one at night so that we remember tomorrow? If you want, you don't have to. Jared, did you have any further, are you still even, if you? Jared, are you awake?
Yeah, I have nothing to add to this right now.
Okay, thank you. We will move on then. We have beat that horse. All right, we will go to two point six, discussion of the proposed stormwater ordinance amendment. I knew we would get to you eventually.
Yeah. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. A couple of things before I get started. This is not a discussion about city standards, even though the title says that. That was a copy from another presentation, didn't catch that change there. But this is a discussion about an amendment to the Storm Service Utility Ordinance, Title twelve, Chapter seven. Before I get too far along as well, this work is a culmination of a lot of work provided by a handful of staff. And right now I'm the guy that gets to take all the credit. Ben Nelson, our Water Resource Engineer, spent quite a bit of time putting it together, quite a bit of reviewed discussions and meetings with myself, Justin Edwards and Shay Sandrizi. So without further ado, we'll get started. This is a, is an amendment to Title twelve, Chapter seven. And what I want to do is quickly outline, I want to talk about the reason for the amendment to what the existing ordinance looks like. And then three, explain what the amendment is and then allow for some time for questions and comments. So the reason behind this is if I'm being expeditious about this, is the state is requiring these handful of items specifically to ensure legal authority that exists to control discharges by effectively prohibiting illicit and non-stormwater discharges into the system. So that's, that's what the intention of this is originally back in two thousand nineteen. This, this stormwater ordinance that exists the way it currently reside or sits in the ordinance was passed in two thousand nineteen to create a stormwater utility. And then to adopt that rate to charge for the stormwater utility and then establish that fund to main compliance with them as four. So, but now what we'd like to do is expand on that, right? There's a couple of, a few things we want to go through. And I want to go through them one by one. The proposed stormwater ordinance, first item here is essentially redefines, and I would reword that as it expands the purpose of the stormwater ordinance, focusing a little more on the, focusing more on the water quality and compliance with the state and federal requirements. We expanded definitions, we kept the original ones in there, but we added a lot of definitions. And then it added, so the original ordinance had the city engineer as the administrator and now it adds the public works director as well. And then it establishes and defines essentially the ownership and defines the ownership of the stormwater system. And then it specifies the requirements and responsibilities with illicit discharges. Kind of says what is and what is not an illicit discharge. Again, it maintains that language of what it, uh, the stormwater ordinance with regards to the utility. But it also adds what it is not. So there's some state and private stormwater utilities that we are stating that is not part of the utility. It also establishes by reference the development standards for the storm drain system. And it also supports the state requirements for construction stormwater management. And additionally, it essentially iterates the need and the requirement for the long-term stormwater maintenance agreements and management plans. And then it makes reference to the eightieth percentile retention requirement required by the state. And provides, this is an important one here, it provides an enforcement system to allow city inspectors to enforce stormwater violations and sets forth an appeal process for that enforcement. Which is essentially the crux of this is we have stormwater inspectors that go out day to day, provide inspections. And, and what we need to do is essentially codify and allow for escalating measures, punitive measures, that is. Now, I, I provided in the staff report a copy of the ordinance. And I recognize that I just went through really fast on what it is on a high level in that staff report. It does have a summary for each one of the paragraphs that were added and the existing ones. Are there any thoughts or questions or anything you want me to iterate or go back and discuss?
Are you glad that there's new regulations so you can go through and add more?
Oh, yeah. You betcha.
Chase, this all passes muster.
So my plan moving forward would be step back and we would come back in a general meeting next city council to move forward. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to, sorry, I'm gonna cut you off. Okay, we will move forward to two point seven, discussion pertaining to the emergency declaration relating to signage, delinquent utility counts and business licensing. Chase?
So this is a, an item that you've already heard before, we talked about it at our last meeting. At that meeting, I presented just a few ordinances that the council had passed in response to emergency measures for COVID. Those two in particular that we discussed were the waiver of the reconnection fee, or I'm sorry, reduce the connection fee from seventy five down to thirty five and then waived the late charge for water accounts that were passed due. And then the second resolution the council had passed was the waiver of business license renewal fees. Council's recommendation at the last meeting was to revoke the resolution that govern, that waived the water late fees and the, and reduced the reconnection fee. And then to come back with added language, which I've done and you'll see in the resolutions included in the packet, to provide up to two waivers of the business license renewal fees for businesses within the city. So that I've, I've kind of done belts and suspenders. I've given up to two within the period of May thirteenth, twenty twenty, when this was originally enacted and ending on May thirty first, twenty twenty two. So it ends automatically without us having to revisit it and does allow up to two business license waivers for businesses within the city.
Awesome. Any further discussion on this item? Bring it back to us then?
Yes, it, we discussed at the last meeting, just doing it on the consent agenda, as long as you're all comfortable with that still.
Yeah, unless there's any objection, we'll put it on the consent agenda. Man, look at how fast we got you to do something there, Chase. That was impressive. All right. The question is, can Michael keep up? So it is two point eight, flag lot ordinance review.
I know it's late and be happy to follow your lead on this conversation. I don't know how much time you would really want to spend on this tonight. And admittedly, a lot of this you have seen once before, but I wanted to maybe just further explain some of perhaps my point of view on, on this issue. And, and, and again, if you have anything that you would like to share with me tonight, I'm, I'm all ears. Again, just our typical illustration of what a flag lot is, it's something that doesn't have frontage on a street, but does have access directly from a street. Typically, it's behind other development, another home. I'd like to just look at the purpose from city code as to why we even have flag lot regulations. So again, this is our existing city code. Flag lots are intended to apply only to exceptionally deep or odd shaped parcels that are isolated from public streets and would be difficult to develop or utilize in, in another way. And this is not an uncommon condition throughout the valley. We have these historic agricultural uses that over time become redeveloped and sometimes we end up with these large parcels kind of in the middle of a surrounding neighborhood. And over time, there's pressure to make changes to that property. Also in our code, it says that an applicant shall demonstrate that a flag lot is the most appropriate development option. And that there is not another option really, and it will not detract from the surrounding neighborhood. So those are benchmark standards in our own ordinance right now. So here are some reasons for and against a flag lot ordinance. Now, we're talking about this because in general, the conversation is, is there a way to potentially broaden the ordinance? I'm not hearing the conversation that we're wanting to tighten our ordinance, but possibly looking at broadening the ordinance. Now, we could also say, well, maybe we want to bring more clarity to the ordinance, which some of the amendments I have in this proposal does that. Maybe there's even a couple of things that have been problematic that should be addressed. But in general, I think the conversation is, are we as a community interested in potentially broadening the ordinance? Maybe even just slightly. So with that in mind, ideas for why we even have a flag lot ordinance, why it potentially can be helpful for a community. It does improve city revenues for city services through property taxes. Obviously, if we encourage development, there are, there is a greater revenue for property taxes. It also increases population, a number of our revenues that we receive do have an impact from residents who are in the city. So there are indirect revenues, not to mention more, more retail service or services and retail goods are purchased. Obviously, there is some taxes that are collected from those transactions. It does also increase private property value. Not only does it improve the city's coffers, so to speak, but it does have an impact on the value of that property for whoever owns that property. If they have the ability to do a flag lot, that does add a significant property value to that individual. Now, this is really a potential encouragement of preservation and sustainability. What I mean by that is oftentimes when you have a flag lot, you're allowing the potential for developing a deeper portion of a lot without necessarily needing to scrape and redevelop the entire property. It's been my experience that because there is inherent value, monetary value in the existing building, quite likely if, if it's not, if it's in a reasonable maintenance position, that, that oftentimes it's, it's more costly or it's more economic to keep the property, perhaps remodel the property, rather than to simply scrape it altogether. And there's also a lot of embodied energy in that existing structure. So if you're thinking sustainability, actually preservation is actually a very, very environmentally friendly method. So it discourages demolition potentially. Again, that's a potential. And there might be other, other reasons. For example, if, if a city has these deep lots, a lot of times they're not being used. They become places where maybe just older vehicles or different things are just stored and it just becomes kind of potentially an eyesore, so it's an enforcement issue. So obviously, if we put that property back into an active use, we may have a benefit there that we're not having potentially a problem with enforcement. Now against, if we allow flag lot regulation or development of, of properties through flag lot, it, it does have a, it does have a tendency to discourage property accumulation and putting together a larger subdivision proposal. For allowing flag lots, people may not opt to that. They may do a more incremental or small scale subdivision, something that's more immediate, rather than waiting for maybe a neighbor property to come available on the market for, for further development. There's also a concern that it may change the historic pattern of a neighborhood or how that property's been used in the past. Some communities have discouraged flag lots because they really don't want to see large lots get redeveloped and subdivided. They really are trying to hold on to maybe those few agricultural properties that they still have. And I've seen some cities use that as a, as a way of saying that they're not really interested in doing flag lots. Not saying that's what's happened here in the past, but I've seen other communities say that. It does have a potential for impact on privacy. Obviously, if we're introducing a home in a location where there hadn't been one in the past, it's obviously something that you would might think is in a rear yard. There is a potential impact on privacy. And it does have some very small increases in traffic, congestion, emissions. Admittedly, that's a very fractional increase. If you look at the volume on just about any road, the increase from traffic from that one or two additional homes, very, very small. But I know that that's something that we would hear. If this was before a planning commission, there'd be concerns about traffic and congestion. And, and maybe there's something else, maybe there's other reasons to be against the flag lot ordinance or potentially broadening it. I don't know if anybody here would like to add to that list or not, but I'll be happy to move on if not.
No, and, and I'll just bump you along here just because I'm the one that keeps nagging about it. But I agree with like discour- discourages proper, property accumulation is getting too late. I agree with that, the real intent, the reason I keep bringing it up is because it's to solve the little one offs that we have throughout the city that are like everyone around developed. And like I have a, a little neighbor, they're elderly, they need to move, they would like to, but they have like over two acres, but their lot is too skinny to do anything else. And so it really makes it really impossible for them to even sell it very well and move to a townhome and realize what they worked their whole lives for. Well, then the next door neighbor, younger, they don't, they have no intention of moving because they're not in that phase of their life, you know? So, so it really eliminates the possibility for them to, and I'm not suggesting that our ordinance should enrich everybody, but to realize the true value of their property. And it's like, it's a really deep lot and it's about two acres. So what will happen is exactly what you described, nothing will get done with it and, and things go to disarray where if they could build one home on the back and, and utilize the property better, it's better for them and better for the city in general. So I just feel like we need to have solutions for those types of things.
And Sherry, I would in all honesty disagree.
Oh, really? Why?
I, I, having gone through, when I, when we had this discussion years ago with a previous council, I sat in those meetings, I listened to and I watched the, the, the number, numerous times that they just, flag lots came in and they came in and they came in and they came in, it was always a one off exception. Every single time it was, oh, this is a one off exception, this is a one, but we were having, every meeting, there was a flag lot that was, was there, they're not one off exceptions, they happen all the time, which is why, which is why the decision was made to not allow them.
I don't know what you mean by one off exceptions.
I keep hearing that, I keep hearing the phraseology around flag lot is like, it's a negative. Like a flag lot is a sin, right? And, and I don't understand why. I mean, I can understand, maybe there's a weird driveway on a corner that comes out onto Main Street. Yeah, I, okay, we don't want to approve on there, but in this example, in a, in a large lot agricultural area, subdividing a two acre lot into one acres, they can put another house in the back. Why is that a?
That's not, that's not.
Why is that an un, why would that be?
Yeah, it doesn't change.
Yeah, why would that be a bad use?
It doesn't change the integrity of the neighborhood. And I believe that when it first started was because we don't want all of our one acre lots chopped up into half acre lots all the time. I agree with that. I don't.
And that's what was, that was exactly what was happening is all the way down the street, right in front of Old City Hall, we got flag lots on all of those lots because one person did it and the next person did it. And it was always a, it was, oh, it's an exception, this is the only way I could do it is an exception for a flag lot. But we went from having these nice big lots. But we went from having these nice big lots to now having double stacked homes on on very, you know, on on not very big lots. Which is why we, we, why the city made that decision in the first place, as I remember it.
No, no, I agree. But I think what we've created is just, now we have a problem that was created by something that was intended to do exactly what you're talking about. But there are simply situations like that, that I think that we can broaden this language with some of the suggestions that Michael has on here, that will take care of that, but with, but still allow those, the integrity of the neighborhoods to stay intact. Because I agree, I don't, I don't want to see, like, if you go into a neighborhood that was intentionally developed with one acre lots, I don't want to see everyone coming in, chop everything up either. But there are simply one offs to, there are simply infill throughout our city that that we need to somehow address and make and make it to where we can fix those areas to make them conform to what's around them.
And and I think that's why I haven't really said much to this point about about it. You know, that I haven't been against having the conversation.
Yeah.
My, my concern is, I I think, as I I think of maps in my head, I'm looking at maps in my head, I'm thinking of these one acre lots that were made, you know, eighty, you know, that made so wide, but really deep. And I see every single one of those, once it's convenient and adding value to them, they come in and ask for another lot for subdivision.
But in my mind, that's where zoning, zoning takes care of that.
But but they came in and asked for a zoning amendment every time. They'll ask for a zoning amendment and a lot and and a flag lot every time.
But 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 the zoning should dictate whether or not you can chop it up into something. So if you want to have, and that's already a law. So if you don't want to change the integrity of the neighborhood, don't rezon it. But 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 then if you allow flag lots in these other areas that they don't have to come in for zoning or anything like that, it already conforms to the area that they're in. And they're just simply trying to utilize the property to the, to the best use of the property that fits within the area because it's already zoned like that. And I just don't see the, I don't see the negative impact of that. If you don't want them to chop up their one acre lots, don't rezon it.
So what happens if we're in a situation, and this is me, this is me just trying to talk this out. This is not me trying to be argumentative. What happens if we're in a situation where we have something that's zoned A1 and everything around it is A25? They're going to come in and they're going to be like.
You mean like, you mean like the property we just talked about over?
Pretty much everywhere in the city. Pretty much everywhere in the city where this stuff happens.
The property you and I were talking, the property you and I went out and visited, right? There were, there was old one acre zoning, but everybody wanted to do quarter acre lots.
Because they make money.
And everybody's like, no, 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 we want to keep these half acre lots.
And then that's what did we say?
And and we.
We said, no, keep it at one acre, right?
But if we're in a situat-, but 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 follow me through this. If we're in a situation where everyone around them has now been given this, the quarter acre, you know, zoning, and they're the only ones in an island in the middle of nowhere, what's to keep them from going to the appeals authority and saying, they're not being fair to us?
Nothing, but that's not coming upon us. If we zoned everything around on point two five and we're making one property owner stick with an A1, that's poor management in our part.
I would agree.
But at, but to, in my opinion, as I'm looking at this, this gives them an incentive to go have that fight. If the incentive to not do a a a flag lot isn't even there, then they're not incentivized to go. The reason that people want to do flag lights is because they can make money. That's, I mean, there's, there's a few of them, there are a few of them out. There may be a few that really truly do want to do one for their kid. And, you know, but the vast majority of these is they want to sell, they want to sell a second home. They want to sell the property, they want to, which is fine, that's totally fair. But if we, if we add that incentive back, now we're going, now we're going back to that situation we had where we were always dealing with flag lots because everybody wants to, everyone feels that they are that same unique situation where, no, this should apply to me. And we kind of, we couldn't figure out a way to say it doesn't. And so what they, what the council did at that point was say, we're done with flag lots. We're not going to do them anymore. We don't want them, we don't, you know, this isn't what we were intending them to be. And it may be fair that we went.
That's not true. There are flag lots allowed in the city.
Yeah, it's, it's been more restrictive and therefore we've seen far fewer of them.
But you can definitely have.
They are still allowed.
It's just, it's just eliminate, it's just kind of picking, picking and choosing who can have them and who who can't. It's like, to me, it just simply doesn't make sense. And what you're saying is the one acre. I'm not talking even about one acre. There are plenty of people around that have two or three acres that they can't do anything with their back. The neighbor I just described to you, they literally would like to do something because, like to move to a townhome. And I don't, I'm not going to penalize them or 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 think it's bad for them to decide they'd like to make money. They've lived there for a long, long time. And so, and so it enables them to better utilize their property and be able to.
But would, would a subdivision there still meet the zoning? I mean, I guess, I guess that's.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. It's like they're over two acres, so even if they're zoned A1, they could still, they could still fit.
And so that, that's a circumstance where, in my mind, that, there's a reason to accommodate a flag lot there, right? Still meets the zoning, it's a huge lot, it's just using land that they own, it's not really agricultural anymore, right? I mean, they're not.
Well, it's still. It's like, yeah, exactly, but it's still one acre, it's still horse property, it's still an, large animal, right? You know what I mean? I just, I just, I just feel like we've just, with good intention, we've just created this, this issue to where there's just some infill that we we can't allow them to do anything. The the subdivision that off of seventy five thirty, same deal. I know that he would like to to arrange it so that he could do that one and two houses would have to access this private driveway to to arrange it that way.
One corner, yeah.
And it's like, to me, it's like, who who cares at that point? It doesn't impact anybody as far as safety and things like that. It allows it to develop, in my mind, it's like.
And and I think that's a fair point. The the issue that I see for coming up as we move forward is that, once we open it up, we open it up to everything. Like, we can't, it's really, really hard for us to say, to pick, you know, you know, we don't pick winners or losers, we say yes or no, and then it all comes. I have a hard time with the argument that, well, we should allow these people to do it because they've want to get money out of the property. It's not our place to pick who gets to make money out of their property. We set the the overall, the overall requirements for the city and they can do what they choose to do within that. We're not, we shouldn't be making decisions based on whether or not that's going to allow somebody to sell property or not.
The truth is, we do that all the time, though. Because every time we allow somebody a zoning change that allows a subdivision, we're saying we're allowing them the opportunity to make more money, right? I mean, that's, that's why subdivisions happen.
Well, that's, that's already set in established code.
But even when you change this zoning law, all of a sudden you made it so these people now they can't make any money. So you do that stuff constantly by passing that last ordinance.
It may not be, it may not be the intent of what we're doing, but every zoning change we make or don't make
Sure.
affects the value of the property.
Sure, absolutely, but I am not making that decision based on that particular factor.
You're right.
And and that's, that's the difference I'm trying to call out there is that I'm not making a decision whether or not that person's going to make more money off of it. I'm going to make a decision because I think that's right for the city. Now, I'm not saying that this isn't what you're doing.
Right.
But if we start talking about things like, hey, well, this person wants to do it because they want to be able to sell their property and 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 I want to let them make money, that is where I think we get into a really dangerous point. We're not making the decision based on what's right for the city.
And I think you have a point. I think there's a really important conversation to have around this, right? See that there are competing concerns and ideas and there's things that are good and things that are bad. And I think, you know, we could go through four or five examples and say, yeah, we all think that's a good example. Bring up another one, we go, yeah, that's, that's a good example. And I think there's some reasonability factor around it too. But how do we, how do we codify that reasonability into an ordinance that would make that decision process a little more simpler and reliable for those that would come to the city to make an application for that, to see, yes, this would make sense, that wouldn't make sense? I don't know how we define that, but I think this issue about the zoning is a, is a big part of it, right? And I think it's bit for the neighborhood is a big part of it. I think it's does it make sense for the property, right? You know, that kind of, all of those things have some bearing. I just don't know how we we codify that.
Well, you may, you may mention the very first, that there's, there's some language in there that, tell me what you said. It's basically like the integrity of the neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, it's a purpose statement. That's in the actual city code right now. Let me go back to that. Right here.
Most appropriate development option.
Yeah, let me, let me just suggest one thing. Based on, again, I've worked for six or seven different communities now. If if our intent is to be more restrictive on flag lot development, that property that sits essentially follow, that is not really being used, could be used maybe agriculturally, but isn't. We're not going to be stopping development forever. Over time, people will accumulate property and they will scrape and rebuild. They will. It's just the natural, if, over time, that property's going to seem as greater and greater value. There's an opportunity to do something and eventually it'll all come together. That's why I'm saying that, and in some ways, a city may say, we prefer that form of development. We would rather have a policy that discourages flag lots because we would rather see traditional subdivisions. We can actually potentially see even more homes built in a potential, in a traditional subdivision versus flag lots. Because typically with flag lots, you're, you don't get the density that you typically get in other kind of typical suburban subdivision layout. So you're, if you're being tough on flag lots, it isn't because you're going to stay the hand of development. You're just deferring it. You're deferring it for another pattern later.
And for me, that's, that's where I look at it and say, I would rather, if somebody wants to come in and renovate, you know, sell their home and move somewhere, sell their home with the entire property as it is. That's what we have there, that's what we've said we want there. We're not, it's not for us to come in and change our minds simply because somebody wants to make more money.
Or somebody could come in and buy two or three lots.
Absolutely.
So you're saying accumulation and then come in and put in a street that goes like this and they can put nine lots in there. I, I understand.
But the problem, the problem is, is you have infill. That's the only thing I'm talking about here is infill. Like, like the, like the, this neighborhood I'm talking about, these are all brand new neighborhoods that surround them. It's going to be thirty years before they redevelop those, those neighborhoods and do infill and stuff and that. And that's all I'm saying is, you just have an option. And it's not, we're not changing the integrity of any of it. What we've allowed in our master plan is point two five is what we've allowed all around them. So it's like, hmm, it doesn't make sense. And we have to say, sorry, you have to just keep, just keep with yours because we're not going to let your kid build a house on the back, you know what I mean? Or or whatever. I just think that we just need to have some flexibility built in there. Just the same as the subdivision on seventy five thirty where it's like,
Really good point.
Put one more house and it's just going to access off a private lane. Who cares? What, how does that negatively impact us? Because we, we're, we're developing that subdivision. So what, what does it really matter if that house is on a private lane? Help me understand how that negatively impacts us if there's two houses that access that driveway versus one.
And some, some advocates are saying that's what's called thickening the city, where you actually get more revenue on the same essentially city street, city inventory or infrastructure. And so you're actually having more tax revenues coming in for maintenance of the exact same infrastructure.
That's a really, because I had that discussion with Alan today, that one of the biggest determinants on neighborhoods penciling out, you know, like all these different subdivisions, if it's going to be a winner loss is the ratio of housing units per street.
Yep.
Right?
It costs us more, yeah.
And so there is something to be said about increasing revenues, but that's, I mean, all densities like that, right? I mean, you get more revenue if you put thirty units on an acre than if you put three units on an acre, right? So, you know.
But that's, to me, that's the same thing that we push back against developers for all the time.
Right.
And so if we're pushing back against developers for that, why are we changing and doing something different just because we feel like it benefits us this particular time?
But it doesn't increase the density in in this.
Well, technically, it does.
No, he gets the same lots, it's just adjusted, just different.
It's not an exception to the base zone, the the acreages and the and the density. It's the frontage, right? It's the frontage, that's the exception.
It's all of those things, right? It does increase density, but it doesn't, you know, detract from the surrounding neighborhood and it may be the most appropriate development option. And I think that those are, those are really important, but they're a little bit subjective, right?
Yeah, and it's hard. And I don't disagree. I don't want to open up the door and and every other day have fifteen flag lots coming in and those types of things. But I think that, I think there's a way to do it with just like this, exceptionally deep, odd shaped, isolated, difficult to develop. Those things make sense to me that we would allow some, some opportunity on those particular types of things.
Maybe the challenge is, is to enforce or follow this purpose statement more in the future as we review potential flag lots.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Let's, let's take a look at this particular instance that you have, right? Let's, let's bring it, let's bring it back and let's show the pictures of it and show what could happen. And and let's go line by line and let's see if it meets what the current status is. And I don't know if there's a couple other example lots you could maybe find around there. And bring us two or three examples and let's.
A good, a bad, and and maybe in between.
Yeah, and and let's, let's apply it, the ordinance as it is and see if the ordinance is sufficient to make a decision. Like, okay, this meets the criteria, we would agree, this doesn't meet the criteria. And if it, if we can go through a few examples and it kind of works, maybe we don't need to make an adjustment.
I'm total, I'm totally fine with that.
And to, and I, I, the biggest thing is, is, and I don't agree with any of the points you're making because I don't want to open up the whole divide every acre lot in Harriman into either. I think that.
I don't think you do, yeah.
I think that we need to maintain that part of our heritage that we have some larger lots. So I have no, but in my mind, that historical thing is controlled by zoning. Now, we can sit here and talk all we want, but as soon as these seats are, are, are vacated by us and filled by someone else, this whole thing could change and that could develop down to point zero zero eight. I don't know, you know, however little the lots can get. But in my mind, I would be hopeful that we try to maintain some of that. But with being able to better utilize some of the, some of the infill to, just to make sure that it's in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood.
So do we give you nice and clear muddy directions?
Yes, so what I'm hearing is you want us to bring a couple of kind of case studies that we can look at and discuss.
Yeah.
We can even mock up some scenarios, like on this property we're talking about.
And maybe a prime example of where it does fit, a prime example of where it really doesn't, and maybe a, an in the between of where we might need to actually make a decision. So that we can understand how, you know, like if, if we needed to make that decision, you know, how, like where would we be?
Good parameters.
So we can see either side.
We like this in the ordinance, we don't like that in the ordinance.
And and that, I would be far more comfortable having that discussion than than, you know, just going in and saying, oh, yeah, let's, let's, let's expand it, right? Like.
Look at some, at least case study semi-real world examples, right?
Yeah, no, I, that's awesome. I agree with that because I, I agree a hundred percent. It's like, well, just because you have one acre. There's a, there's one across the street from me that's one acre and they're trying to sell it as subdividable. And I'm like, that's not subdivitable.
And that's exactly what happened. Every single, like, you could go down, literally go down a couple of our streets in Harriman and look and say, that's a flag lot, that's a flag. Well, why are every single one of them flag lots and they're all fairly new homes? Why are they all, why did they all qualify as flag lots?
Yeah.
Right.
Because they got a reason.
And just one comment, Michael, I, I really appreciate the, the content of this presentation having, here's some reasons why you might want to do it, here's some reasons why you wouldn't want to do it. I, I think that's really helpful for our decision making is to see and weigh some of those criteria against each other. So thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Do you feel like this exercise would be beneficial to have at a joint meeting with Planning Commission in a few weeks?
No.
I do not.
No?
It gets too, it gets too like broad and then it's just too much.
As, as much as I think the value, we have the value in those meetings.
My concern with those meetings is that the direction for policy comes from the council.
Right.
And I think the Planning Commission, in their haste to be good stewards of the city, forget that it's the city council's decision, not theirs.
So, so here's the reality is, is it's the council that has been engaging staff on this issue.
Right.
We, if it's the council's direction, we'll prepare a draft amendment that the commission then would have an opportunity to hear and recommend to you. But they're not the ones asking for it, the council, or at least some members of the council.
Yeah, yeah, who is that, huh?
Not, and I, no, I agree with them. It's not that I don't appreciate their dialogue and things like that.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
It gets too like broad and then we can never bring it back to, to make a decision.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Good discussion, guys.
Yeah.
It's really tempting to just tell Alan that he can't do anything, but I know we have to do this item, so. I was really tempted to just be like, oh, we're done.
You know, at this point, we've been away all this time. You know, at this point, we've been with all this time.
Might as well just do it. All right, 3.1 fiscal year 2021, 2022 Harriman City tentative budget presentation.
Okay, just know that this is a brief introduction to the budget and, uh, then we'll, uh, we'll, we'll break, but, um, I've got the calendar up. So you get your budget today. It's, it's been emailed to all of you. It's a brief 283 pages long.
I know staff isn't going to be happy with this, but can I please get a paper copy?
Yeah.
Thank you. What? Yes, please.
Yeah.
I will do a better job of reviewing it and making sure it's clear and accurate if I have a paper copy.
We'll get you a paper copy.
Thank you. I told you they wouldn't be happy about it.
Okay, on, on the calendar, this, this budget needs to be approved in our meeting on June 9th. So, um, for the next couple of meetings, we'll have questions and analysis. On May 12th, the tentative budget should be approved, okay? Once you approve the tentative budget with any changes you want to make, that's when it becomes public and we put it out to everyone to, to read. Uh, we will have a public hearing on May 26th. And then on June 9th, we have to approve it. We actually have till the 20th of June to approve it, but we don't have a meeting after the 9th. So that's our day that I've got on the calendar. Okay, I just want to give you a real quick overview of the budget. One of the things that you'll find in this budget is it's been done very conservatively. We, we went to our managers with the same things that we told you about how we couldn't meet the priorities at the level we were operating. And we asked them to take a look at how they were operating and they came back with very conservative budgets. Here's what I'd like to just share with you in, in the general fund. We're expecting revenues this year in our general fund of 26,110,000. The budget to operate our departments, and this is the departments other than public safety because they're separate, but I was trying to get to a bottom line of the general ledger to, have general fund to show you here. You see, our revenues over our department expenditures is 6,537,000. We make our debt service payment. We pay, make our payment for the public works. We transfer the money to public safety to pay for animal services and, uh, emergency services. And this year with the budget that's been put together, we have 3,300,000 excess. Uh, our departments actually did a very, very good job of budgeting. And they were very conservative. And you'll see as we go through a couple of things going forward here. Some things to, to keep in mind in the budget is that there is proposed in here a 3% across the board wage increase. And then in addition to that, there are a few places in the budget where, um, we've proposed market adjustments, which, um, have been proposed by our human resources. But in general, we've looked at 3% all the way across. We also, um, from our broker that does our health insurance have been told that we would get a 5% increase in health insurance. We budgeted for 5%. They've now come back and told us that they think it might be three and a half. But we don't know that yet. So we budgeted 5% in this budget. And you'll see there, you know, that a 5% increase is going to increase the city's share by $64 and the employees' share by $16. I think this is an area though, as we go below that to see where some of the, uh, real restraint was done in our budgeting. In our general fund departments, we have one full-time person requested this year. That's a facilities, uh, person who would be able to do both electrical and HVAC, which we now contract. It would also include one 10-hour per week intern in the planning department. This budget also includes four water system operator ones. Now, the proposal is that they hire two of them at the beginning of the budget year and two at halfway. So we're, we're looking at an increase of four full-time equivalent, but only two of them would be the full year this year. But going forward, we would have four. They also propose in the water department hiring one water conservation coordinator. This would be a new position. Then if you look on the right there, the police are, um, proposing one supervisor that's a sworn officer, two police officers sworn, one parking enforcement officer and one mental health officer. And they spoke of the mental health need earlier, but. So in total, there are 11, uh, total positions that are requested. But I think you'll see with the general fund only requesting one, it's pretty minimal amount. Okay, next, we have a number of vehicles that are requested in this budget. And as you'll remember, we did not buy any last year. We went, we skipped the year waiting to see what happened. And so we have a little bit bigger need this year. Now, everything on this list is a replacement of a vehicle that's going to be taken out of service, except that four of the police F-150s will be for the new employees that they're bringing on. So we, we need four vehicles for that. Now, as, as they told you, Monty goes through a, a, uh, pretty, uh, involved spreadsheet of when he decides these need to be replaced. Several of these vehicles are many years old and, and need to be replaced. We would, uh, we would do most of these on a three-year lease. However, the hook lifts and the aerial lift would probably be done on five years. They're, uh, they're more expensive vehicles, but they also last longer in our, in our system. The, the hook lifts, some of the hook lifts we have now are pushing 10 or, or more years old. Okay, um, there's also a few pieces of equipment that have been requested. All of these are in the streets department. The big one being a new caterpillar loader. And, uh, this particular loader would be replacing one that is more than 10 years old. But part of the reasoning behind this loader also is that the loader we have now is not big enough to load our newer trucks. So we need a bigger loader because everything we're getting is big enough to satisfy the city. The loader we have is not. So we've got a few things there. Not much though. And these also would probably be leased on a five-year lease. So we would, we would see a 20% of that roughly in an annual. In our operating budget, those are the main additions that are outside of ordinary operations that we would be looking at. It's pretty minimal in relation to what we normally do. Okay, then we've got some, some impact fee projects and some capital free fee capital project that are proposed in the budget as well. So this is just a list of the capital projects that would be done this year. You know, as always, some of these capital fund fee proj- impact fee projects are, uh, dependent that the impact fees actually come in this year. We've made some adjustments this year because they've not been as high, high as they ought to be. But these impact fee, uh, projects are done based on meeting with the departments and with our engineering and, and going through their, their priorities and their rankings of, of priority. Um, this top one is our general fund, uh, capital projects. And these are using our engineering's, um, priorities for the projects. And we do have on the agenda for our next meeting for Jonathan to come and share with you how he came about picking these priorities and showing you the other, I don't know, 50 something projects on this priority list for capital projects. So he will be here to share those with you. Now, these final ones, the water capital projects, big number, but this is budgeting to spend the $20 million we just got in the bond this week that, uh, we, we closed on, I don't know, a week ago or so. Last, last Wednesday, I think, we, um, went to market on those bonds. So we're, we're budgeting for the spending those bonds. So. That's what I have. Do you have some questions to start with? Or you want to wait questions till you look at the budget?
Let's wait until we see it and look at it.
Okay.
I, I do have a question. What's the percentage of increase on the budget?
Um, okay, I, I did want to bring that to your attention and I don't have, okay, total increase. I actually have two percentages for that in the budget. And I don't usually do that, but as I met with our budget people, mainly Wendy and Tammy, we decided it'd be better to put two percentages because our budget last year went way down during cutting, cutting the COVID stuff and then having some CARES Act. So we had one percentage that compares it to our original budget and another percentage that shows it what we actually did. And as I'm remembering, it was about 2% increase over last year's budget. It's about 13, I think, over what we actually did last year. So, and that'll show you in, in the general fund. For each of the line items, I've put both of those where it compares it to the original budget, compares it to the revised budget. So.
I appreciate that. That's good information for us to be able to really look at. Thanks.
Yeah, good. Well, when you look at the revised budget, it actually gives you a kind of a skewed look at what really happened. And so, um, we thought that it would be better to show both so you could see how that works. So, um, the revenue, as I remember, is going up 16% and I think we're going up 2%, roughly 2% in expenditures.
That's pretty good if our, if our employment costs are going up 3% and our overall budget is only going up 2%, that, that's really actually really good because I'm sure that's a line, that's obviously the line.
Well, and I think that, um, we've been really conservative on our, on some of our, um, approach to the revenue this year, particularly in our building permits and so forth. We had a down year the last two years on building permits, but they're up a little bit right at this point. We're looking at 2% increase there. I think that it may be more than that. If it is, we'll come back to you for a change in the budget. But, um, from my point of view, I would tell you that our managers have reacted in last year's budget in adapting to the pandemic and what they've proposed in this year, given us things that will allow us to build on, to do the things that Justin and Troy and all were telling us that we need. You know, we, we met with our managers, we met with our directors and we told them, you know, we can't grow our operations at this level if we want to do these things. And I think they've come back to us with something that we can work with to look forward to some of these other things.
That's good.
We appreciate that from our staff. Thank you very much.
And just going back, I think it was one slide, maybe two slides. You know, one more slide. So, I mean, with, with, with there being, you know, a request for 15 new trucks for the police, I'd be a lot more inclined to support that if those were Dodge Ram 1500s. I mean, I'm just saying.
Nope, F-150s, F-150s.
I'm a GM guy, okay?
All right, Alan, I'm not even going to ask, I'm not.
I appreciate that, that they're looking at ways to cut costs so that that money can be spent towards a facility. That's good, that's good information.
Yeah, well, you know, that was a, the message that Wendy and Tammy and I kind of went to them with is we can't, we can't do it all. So let's see how we can do this and make it work. And I think that you've had a good response to that. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan. We're going to go ahead and move on to item 3.2, which is still you, which is an update on the water bond rating.
Hey. I mentioned that we did the water bond last week and, and, uh,
That was fun.
If you've ever been a part of that, if you've never been a part of it, you ought to be sometime. Well, for two hours last Wednesday morning, people were bidding on our bonds, okay? We had bids of 13 times what we had available to sell. Okay, uh, so we were able to.
See, we should have sold more.
Yeah. Well, uh, our average yield was, our weighted average yield was 1.43%. So it was really good. It went, went as good as could be expected. But I was actually asked on the agenda to talk about our new water, uh, bond rating. We went through the rating process with Standard and Poor's over the last couple of months. We presented with them a lot of financial information, a lot of operational information. We actually had a presentation with them one day and talked to them about everything that was going on. Well, they've come back with a rating on our water bonds and I just want to share with you some of what their letter says in, in giving us this rating. Says Standard and Poor's global rating revised its outlook to positive from stable and affirmed an A-plus rating. So we were already in A-plus, but they've reaffirmed that. But they, um, their outlook for us is positive where it's been stable in the past. The positive outlook reflects a, a one in three chance that we could raise the rating once the utility's long-term wholesale contract terms are more certain and management is able to maintain a robust, robust financial management practices. The contract we agreed to just a few minutes ago with Jordan Valley Water was one of the big issues we had all through this bond. Everyone was worried, are you going to have a new water contract? Are you going to have the water that you need? So that was one of the things on the bond rating that they, they mentioned is that we needed to get that contract in place and we need to continue to maintain our robust financial management product practices. We recognize that the utility's all-in-depth service coverage has improved to an extremely strong level over the past three years due to the utility maintaining its leverage at a moderately low level, which we believe is sustainable. We believe that the growth-related pressures on the water system has been and will be addressed in conjunction with the utility's robust. in conjunction with the utility's robust long capital planning formal rate studies. The utility has not experienced a significant increase in delinquencies or a substantial decline in revenues to date related to the pandemic. Total operating revenues increased by about 30% in 2020 from 2019 due to continued growth and area higher demand for water due to hotter temperatures. Over the medium term, we consider credit risk to be relatively manageable given the system's moderately low leverage, robust all-in-debt service coverage, and very strong liquidity and reserve positions. We also consider the utility's significant residential customer base to be a stabilizing credit factor. That's interesting. Their residential piece is what they considered to be our stabilizing factor in in this bond rate.
Alan, I'm just going to note the time here that we only have a few more minutes before we have to make a motion to extend, so.
I have two minutes left.
There we go.
Okay, I I bet, maybe not even that. In our view, the utility's overall financial performance has been very strong during the past three fiscal years. Then in its credit, and I'll just summarize these. The very strong financial risk profile reflects our view of the utility. Very strong historical all-in debt service, very strong liquidity and reserve position, moderately outlined capital needs, well-defined and comprehensive financial management practices and policies that we consider good under our financial management assessment methodology. So all in all, a very strong recommendation for what we're doing in running our water department. And they they see that, they've given us a positive recommendation.
Did I understand that correctly that with the establishment of the water contract, they would actually consider raising us to a double A rating possibly?
Yes, they they the the that was one of the things that they were worried about raising us was not having a water contract. So now, where we're already under bond, I don't know if we'll go back for a new rating just now, but it's something that is in place for the next time.
A double A rating for a municipal bond is excellent.
Yep.
Really good.
Mayor and Council, I just want to commend Alan and Justin were tremendous through this process, as well as our partners in Zion's and KeyBank, all very helpful in getting us that successful rating. So we're we're super.
Thank you, staff. We appreciate all that.
Very well done.
Yeah, they're great.
All right, so that brings us to the end of our work agenda. I need a motion from a member of this body to extend into tomorrow.
I don't want to.
I'm moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So that motion passes, so we will continue over. However, we are going to move into closed meeting. When we do move into closed meeting, there will be no further business, public business that needs to be taken care of in an open meeting after that. So everyone, feel free to go home and and don't stick around because we won't be doing anything else. We also ask that staff go immediately into the other rooms so that we can get going as quickly as humanly possible.
Yeah, Jackie, will the the audio doesn't work in there still, so she'll need to hook up her laptop.
Okay, but I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to temporarily reassess the city council meeting to convene a closed session for the purpose to discuss character, professional competency, your physical and mental health of an individual in a purchase exchange or lease of real property as provided by UTEC code annotated 52-4-205.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to second. Sheri?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Jared, are you still with us? Jared is no longer with us. I'll vote yes. Is that sufficient? Okay, so we are in closed.
He didn't respond when I asked him.
It's 100% of a forum, so.